Good evening. We'd like to begin our September meeting with Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a crowd here tonight. So glad to see so many lovely faces out here in the crowd. Anybody that comes up and wants to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and everything, so it's all recorded and you'll see your lovely faces on TV before the week's over. All right, we'll begin with minutes and operating statements.
I make a motion that we approve the August 2025 operating statements. August 25, 2025 council meeting minutes, September 8, 2025 work session minutes.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions? Hearing not all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes, motion's carried. Now for approval of the Quantum financial statement.
I make a motion that we approve Quantum's financial statements for August 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Just let everybody know that Tony and Ellen do not vote on this because Ellen's a resident there and Tony's wife is the keeper up there, so they will not be voting on this. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes, motion's carried. I've seen him a lot. Okay, I don't have a lot under the mayor's report. You want to do this under the mayor's report or just when we get down to other business, Dawn? How you want to do this? Okay. Okay, we had a work session a couple of weeks ago with the council and I have a statement here prepared and this is what the council would like to have done regarding our Donald Wilson Park. Any proposed public events on town properties, including planning, picnic tables, benches, grills, et cetera, and volunteer work must be presented and approved by the Union Bridge Town Council. And this is a statement, this is what the town council would like to have done. And I don't think, I don't see anything wrong with this. I said, I'm probably just as bad with what's been going on down there because Sherry's asked me the last couple of years about Dream Big, having their event down there. And I said, yes, and so I'm a big, probably a biggest volunteer on that part of it as anybody else because I gave the approval without bringing it to the town council. So this is a statement that was prepared by the council. I don't think that's asking too much of anybody to get anything that's done down there approved by the council. That's what the council would like to see and I don't see, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem with anything being done down there because I think the park looks very nice. It's one of the better parks in Carroll County. I don't spend as much time down there as Donald Wilson does, but I'm down there at least once a week. And I think it's a very lovely park and I think what is being used for is fine. And they're just asking that it's come to the council and everything be approved. I know the Lions Club's been doing some things down there and I know they're insured through the Lions Club International if anything should happen. But this is a statement, that's what I read, this is what the council would like to have done. And I don't think I was asking a whole lot of anybody. It's just so that we can keep a track of what's going on down there, or the council can, so. Microphone and give name.
Ed Humphries, just want to ask, I pick up sticks and all. Is that, do I got to get permission back to?
Oh, no, huh? Now, when you're walking the trail, you know, there's people pick up stuff all the time when you're walking the trail. I think that's great.
I make a point of sometimes like a couple hours clean up.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Over to the side and throw them away, yes.
I'd like to ask a question.
Microphone, please.
Now, your stadium is like-
Name, name.
I'm sorry, Eileen Weeks, I'm with the Lions Club.
Okay.
And I'd like to know exactly what you mean, like, we go down there, well, some of us are down there every day. We've asked if we could mow a certain area of the park and we were wanting to maintain it. We have already, before, we were told not to do anything. We had already put in some picnic tables, different things, some flowers, et cetera. And what I'm wondering is, are we going to have to come to you every time we plant a bush or a flower or a tree or-
Now, that's, you have to ask the council. I'm just administrator. This is the council's agreement. You have to ask the council what they want to do on that.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, could we get a general agreement with you as to what you think we can do?
Well, it says it right here.
Picnic tables.
It says it right here on this. It says it right on this statement I just read. It says, "Any public event, including plannings, picnic tables, benches, grills, et cetera, and volunteer work must be presented and approved by the Union Bridge Town Council." I mean, I think what you've done down there is really great. It looks beautiful. I don't have a problem with it.
Everyone does.
This is, this is the council, this is what the council wants. I don't think it's asking too much for, you know, like, once a month or every couple of months to bring a plan down here with what you want to do with that, so it's on our plan, on this town's plan, so they can put it in the minutes and know what's going on down there. I don't, you know, I don't think they're asking every time you want to plant a little bush or something, you have to tell them, but-
Right.
And I don't have a problem with the area that you've got that you're mowing. I think it's great. It looks great. It takes a burden off of us.
Right.
But this is, like I'm saying, this is, you know, don't kill the messenger. This is, this is what the council wants and I don't think-
No, I'm not arguing. I'm just not clear of what, like, for example, I have a lot of things at home that I can transplant, like tulip bulbs that I can plant now and they'll come up in the spring. Do I have to ask each month?
Ask the council what they want. I'm not, this is beyond them.
Well, I would like to know from the council exactly how much, how often do we have to come to you? I mean, can we just have a general plan where we agree, which we, I know, we've been talking for years to Donnie Wilson about this exact thing and we finally got around to it. We wanted to have, and I've seen other parks, Thurmont, for example, where they, the Lions Club up there has done wonders on the trolley trail. They've, you know, put a lot of stuff in there that wouldn't be there if they hadn't done it. We're not looking for credit for ourselves. We don't need to put our little name tag on their Lions Club of everything. We first started out with our bench and our lions, and that's our little lion's den there. And we've added some flowers and we wanted to put a couple of nice arbor vitals or some kind of trees right behind the bush, I mean, the bench. And then we added, we added picnic tables. And we were going to add a grill because Perry had had a grill down at the creek and we asked, is that okay? And we like that area because it's close, you can hear the, it's close to the front of the park because some of our older people can't walk to-
And what I'm saying, Eileen, is not a problem, I don't have a problem with what you planted. They're just asking from now on, you know, and which Donald and I was probably, like I say, I'm taking as much blame for what you've done already because I didn't come back and ask the council. This is what the council wants done. I gave it upon myself to go ahead and do it. So I'm, you know, I'm taking blame. This is what the council. So as long as you stay within these guidelines, you know, you ask them, I don't know, they're talking about plannings every time you want to plant your tulips? I don't know.
So I think you need to do is come to our work session in October, which would be the second Monday of the night, prepared with what you want to do. And keep in mind that because it is a wetlands park and it's a habitat, you need to be careful that you plant what you have to plant.
I have the rules of the wetlands park. I understand those. We're not doing anything to disturb that.
Our work session is actually going to be a week early because of Columbus Day, so October 6th.
Okay, October 6th. At 6:30.
And that's here?
Yes.
And then they have to call you, Dawn, and get on the agenda?
Yes.
Because right now we have, you know, when we, when we work in the park, lots of people walk by and, you know, they compliment us.
Oh, yes.
And actually, we had a lady who said she has a really nice picnic table that she would like to donate. So we would like to, we cleaned up where we didn't even realize there was another beach area out close. Very pretty.
Right.
And we'd like to put a picnic table in that area. So that's one thing that we would like to get permission to do.
I think you ought to set up a time, sometime, while it's still daylight or something, on a Saturday or something, and the council all goes down and, and visits the place and, and walk through and, and do a discussion on-
I think that would be great.
I mean, I go down there a lot, but I know not everybody does, you know, and I think what you, like I say, I think what you've done down there is great. It looks beautiful. You know, we, I go to these other meetings around and we was in a meeting several months ago and all of other towns got up and got to talking about how nice their park was and I told them, they were bragging about their parks, and I said, well, Union Bridge has got the best one around. And I know last year we had, after they stocked it down there with trout, we had a gentleman that wrote a really nice article in the Annapolis Gazette or something down there about the park down there because he was down there trout fishing. And, you know, it was in the Natural Resources book about, you know, about trout fishing down there. I think, you know, we've got some really nice things going on down there and we wouldn't have had the trout. I mean, the gentleman that stocks the trout stream, I got to know and he asked me a couple of years ago about stocking the trout, you know, if he could stock the trout. And I said, yes, and this is the third year that it's been stocked with trout down there.
Right. I know, I've seen, well, of course, young people and I've seen older people come in with fishing poles.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And walking, a lot of the older people walk for their help and-
Yeah. Yeah, we see you walking all the time.
I appreciate you to walk along.
You're walking at times that I don't have time to walk.
Can I ask that, like you said you had somebody who wants to donate a picnic table. Could we see a picture of that at the meeting? Because we want to make sure everything is uniform aesthetically. We don't want mismatched stuff down there.
Well, the two that we bought to put in there are really nice and really heavy. I'm assuming hers is very nice. I haven't seen it yet, but she doesn't live far from me. We can go look at it. I can get pictures of it. We, actually, we're going to go ahead and pick it up, but the weather turned bad and we couldn't get in the park, so we didn't do it. But that was one thing we wanted to do. Was there anything else?
Not really, not, not.
Oh, benches. We were, we were wanting to, I kind of thought, like, I've had lots and lots of people volunteer that we don't even know that would like to come there and help do anything. If, let's say, we have to take down a dead tree, that's another thing. There's a couple of dead trees in there. Well, obviously, you need help to remove that wood and all that. So I sort of was going to call them, you know, friends of the park, friends of the Patriot Park, and then I'd call on them whenever, in general, it would normally be just Lions Club members.
Yeah. Well, usually if it's going to be any trees come down, that should be with our utility people just for insurance purposes. I know you have insurance through the Lions Club, but-
Yes.
I know, of course, when Steve was there, but Herb and them, they go down and, and they take assessment on trees, like when the wind gets bad and all and pieces come down, and they, they've been doing a pretty good job of keeping up with the trees, so that's something that we should probably take care of. Yeah. But dead ones, I mean, we got, we know some are dead which won't come down until fall, you know, so. And then we usually put them over on the pile and try to burn them.
The other idea we had too was, I don't think you can have too many benches in there myself if you walk around the whole trail. We were going to ask people if they would like to donate a bench with a memory plate on it in memory of someone, loved one or something. And then maybe there's some, a few areas in, in our section where it's really pretty down by the creek, so if you faced it like toward the creek, looking at the creek. And everything that we've done there, we've secured down with the-
Oh, we have to, yeah.
So I guess that's all I have.
Hi, my name's Dale Wood and I'm the vice president of, and I really just want to start out with an apology. We thought we had the appropriate approvals. It was not anyone's intention to cause any kerfuffle or problems or anything. I don't see anything personally wrong with what the council is asking of us. I think, Eileen, and my concern would only be, you know, I don't want to have to run to the council every time I need to mow, mow down there, or if I want to trim a few branches or something like-
I think, you know, the area that you guys have, you've been mowing and it's up to the council. I don't have a problem with you taking care of that area, mowing around that because when our guys go down there and mow, the less they got to mow around them, the better off it is for us because we don't have to spend the time down there to do it.
Truthfully, and what really kind of, you know, we, we were actually given permission some time ago, like others, to put a bench down there, so that's what we did. And right about at that same time, Mr. Wilson got injured. So we thought, well, he can't mow, he can't do those things, so why don't we jump in and do that? We understood at the time that the council in the city, rightfully so, would not want us to use their equipment, so a couple of the members got together and we purchased the equipment. So we made a personal investment. We made an investment through the club and we made a commitment. And we'd like to partner with the town to continue the process that we've begun.
Yeah. Well, like I said before, I guess I'm as much at fault as anybody because, you know, I knew what you was doing and I didn't bring it back to the council for council's approvals, so.
Well, and truthfully, Perry, as far as the club goes, I'm probably more guilty than anyone else because, you know, I started, we were just supposed to mow that little spot and I got a little, you know, my head got out in front of my skis a little bit, let's say. But I thought we had approvals and that we were getting such positive feedback that I really didn't, just didn't see that on her.
Yeah. But like I say, it's-
I think what you're asking is completely reasonable. I, I'm sure the rest of the club probably feels the same way. Our only concern would be, like I said, I don't want to have to come to the club every time I have to start a lawn mower, you know.
Oh, yeah, well, I think-
We're not asking for any money.
That's something that we, they can come up with an agreement on that. I mean, that's like I'm saying. I mean, I go down there a lot. I think it's, it'd be nice for everybody to see your area that you're taking care of.
I, my, I will leave my phone number. I've got it in the register there. But I'm happy to individually or as a group walk everybody through there. I and I both basically know everything that we've done down there. So we're happy and we really would like to have you guys as partners and not have confrontation or, you know. That's really all, you know, all I have to say about it.
I think just come up, maybe come up with a time where, do it one time for everybody rather than taking individual people down there.
There is another issue that we could really help with, I think. We would need to actually partner with the town. But the relief canals that are cutting for the overflow are just full of overgrown trees. They haven't been able to be maintained and there's no way for the water to get into the retention ponds. So we were thinking, or I was thinking, perhaps with your help or the town's help, we need to get a little project together. So when it does rain, the water doesn't lay there the way it does. You know, we can't help what God gives us, but we can do something about getting it out of there and moving it where it's supposed to be. Those retention ponds are dry.
Yeah.
They shouldn't be. Just something else I think we can add to it. We're looking at this as, as our environmental project for the club. And if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Well, I think this is something they can discuss when they have this work session and, and maybe, like I say, I think it'd be nice for everybody to go down and take a tour of it as a group, you know, and, and see what's going on. I mean, like I say-
We'll make sure that what it has will contact information and we'll follow up with it.
Okay. Maybe we can do it bef, actually, if it'd be possible, everybody get together before the work session so that everybody's on the same streamline when you get ready to discuss what you've done and everything.
I think it would be very helpful. I think it would go a long way and everybody be, at least being on the same page. And again, like I said, I apologize. I'm probably more, like you're accepting, I'm probably more guilty of anybody else in our-
Well, I say I, I am too because when I was asked about doing, I just, I thought it was, it was beautifying and it was making a better park because there's, there's hundreds of people that walk that thing.
We get a lot of compliments.
Oh, yeah. And we've been getting compliments on that thing for the last couple of years, the way it's maintained and stuff.
I have to tell you, I've been impressed with what Donnie's been able to do. I'm not telling tales out of school. We all know his age and his health. But I mean, my God, I mean, he's remarkable for, for what he's been able to do down there.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you everyone for that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mandy, I have a question. If we did all meet, would that be subjected to Open Meetings Act? Where we'd have to advertise that the whole council is-
Yes.
Yes.
Going down. Okay. So then we would need, what, two weeks to advertise that?
Yep.
Okay.
So we're not probably going to be able to do that for the work session?
Yes.
Unless you go one or two at a time.
I'm just, I'm sorry, let me interrupt you. But in the meantime, just so we're clear, it's my plan, it's, I broke my lawnmower down there, by the way. So as, when it comes back from the shop, it is my plan to go down there and continue mowing as long as I have your approval and we're not doing really anything else. We're not putting any benches or anything else like that. Is there a problem with that? Can you guys at least say, yea, or nay, to that?
And they continue to mow the area that they-
I need to see the area because I don't know.
I don't even know what it is.
Yeah, I don't know what-
You can see what it is. It's not that big an area.
Just right from the street, you can see it?
No, you have to go down the trail.
Okay.
Does it not get mowed regularly? Not typically.
No, because we weren't mowing on regular basis, but they were mowing it like once a week or something, that area that they had.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's more like a lawn now. And I really would hate for it to get out of hand again, you know.
I would, can I just say one more thing here on this? Is, that was a wetlands park with a trail through it. It always was. It was never intended to be a park for people to gather and have parties and cookouts and things like that. If that's something that the council wants it to become, one, I think we need to check with the county because it is a wetlands-
State.
Yeah, the state, I'm sorry.
MDE and TNR.
Before we go too far with anything, then we also have to, bear in mind, there isn't any parking there. So if you make things to where you bring a lot of folks in, there's no place for them to park.
I'm not sure, excuse me, I don't need to speak out of turn. I'm not sure that I understand the real objection there because we're not doing anything to damage the wetlands. We've read up on that quite a bit, and myself and Eileen. And everything, we're not doing anything below the root grade. We're not, we're not touching any of the root systems. All we're doing basically is mowing, killing mosquitoes and snakes. We're not, we're not trying to-
Some might argue that killing the snakes is not what you should be doing as well.
Well, we haven't seen any, I haven't seen any down there, but I'm just saying-
And, and it is incredibly dry right now. We've had two really dry years. And you, you know that there are times when there's several feet of water over the entire area and everything that you place there could possibly end up in Mary Clemence's Meadow or farther at some point.
But again, again, I want to raise, and I, and I can point this out to you when we walk down there. Part of the reason that the water lays the way it does is because there's no way for it to get where it does.
But that's the point of a wetlands park is for the water to lay there because it's a wetland. I honestly don't know what-
Hundred-year floods.
Yeah, I don't know what their purpose is.
I'm sorry, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
Well, we're-
I mean, you're right, man, but I'm just saying that that, that, I'm, it just doesn't, it doesn't-
Okay, on this, on this part of this issue, I'm going to call a point of word on that. We're going to move on with our meeting because I know our deputy has to go on another call. So I'm going to change the meeting and then we're going to pick, sum this up underneath of public comments and concerns. So Kevin, if you want to come up and give your report, because I know you've got a, a situation going on uptown that needs-
You'll get your time. You'll get your time, Sherry. I'm sure of that.
You've got a situation that needs to be taken care of.
Thanks for moving me up. I apologize, guys. I interjected a very compassionate argument there and I appreciate you moving me forward. I took a call earlier that I got to finish up and before I go home, and I got to finish up the report for that and I'll talk a little bit about that. But I wanted to say it's good to see the Lions Club here tonight. I'm glad to see people are here and, and doing good things for the community. And I'm very familiar with the New Windsor Lions Club, but I'm just looking to is out there. I want to get in touch with the Union Bridge Lions Club and work with you guys a little bit more down on here in the near future and hopefully we can make that happen, but it would be great. And you guys do great things for the community. You guys know that. So I got a really quick briefing tonight. There was only one reportable call within Union Bridge for the month. However, today I took another one, my luck, right before the meeting, so I got to finish that up and go on with that. So between August 25th and September 22nd, 2025, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office responded to 22 calls for service within the town of New Windsor. I put New Windsor, this is Union Bridge. I'm sorry. I apologize. Now, those calls for service, one was found to be reportable on 9/7/25 at 9:25 a.m. A check welfare was reported on East Albert Street. The individual was reported living in their, by themselves and close contacts believe that the self-care of the individual was an issue. Upon arrival, deputies observed numerous handwritten notes throughout the apartment, tape to walls and refrigerators, nightstands, and near the couch, which were utilized as reminders. Ultimately, interviews were completed and next of 10 family members were contacted to further assist the individual with daily tasks. That case was later closed. So it was a relatively slow month as far as a call line goes. However, today, took a domestic on Benidorm Street. It was a father and son related. I can't really go into too much, I don't have the notes in front of me, so I don't want to spill too many beans, but it was, the primary aggressor was unable to be determined at the time because I got two conflicting stories. There weren't any visible injuries, so it was coded as a mutual assault type of deal and that case is still open. They were referred for charges. And I think as far as, oh, because this park is a fresh topic, I know, was it last month, a park bench was stolen from the park that was-
And returned, yes.
And returned.
Yes.
Well, I guess, I guess that's why I don't have a report for it. Yeah, I just, I know there's been some strange things going on down there lately and you just don't know what type of world we live in sometimes. So it's, it's great to see everybody here that's vigilant, caring about the park and just would be nice to maybe, I know the town's invested in cameras before. One was stolen, I know recently, and I know in the back there, we got some individuals that know intimate details about that. One was stolen and, but I, I don't know if maybe we can put, put more surveillance down there or what we can do to try to help that. I mean, I'll try to be more present down there and do more patrol checks, but it is a beautiful park. I will leave it at that and, and I'd like to see it thrive in the future. So, yeah, that's all I got. If anyone has anything for me real quick before I shed?
Only thing I'll say, be careful out there on these domestics. We saw what happened over the weekend.
Yes, sir.
One of the fourth deputies up in Pennsylvania died today and that was out on a domestic. And, you know, we just got to be careful out there, you know, keep your eyes and ears open and, you know.
Does the town still have that bicycle that the deputies used to use?
So it's-
It's too big for him.
I'm lucky to tell, but I'm five foot six inches and my predecessor was about 6'5". We may be working on getting it doing. I don't know if that might be something we can entertain.
I can see you riding a trail.
Yeah, well, it'd be nice, but, you know, I did, I did inflate the tires on it down at Perry's shop one day and I did ride it around, but I couldn't put my foot down. This is a workplace injury waiting to happen, so I did hang it up.
We need training wheels.
The New Windsor bike fits me, but the New Windsor bike is in dire need of repair. It's old tracks and the tires drive on it, so I, maybe I could do a joint jurisdictional bike because I don't really need to, and maybe I could entertain getting it fixed up at the bike shop, but I'm glad you brought that up. I would like to ride my bike more. I do have the bike in uniform. It's just neither of the bikes are really in very good optimal condition right now. And thank you for adding that, Ben Perry. It's been a tough week. That, that incident actually happened four minutes from my house, so it did hit home for me. A lot of thoughts have been going through my mind, especially having a son at home, so I appreciate the-
And while you're here, before you go, I'd like to thank you for your patrols. I think our parking problem on North Main Street has been eliminated.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much. That's great to hear. And I know that the, the school has taken initiative with that and I think they're doing better with it. And just, I don't think much has changed other than the administration is quicker with getting the process going, so that's good. Good news.
Helped us out a lot up there. Thank you.
All right, take care, guys.
Thank you too.
Okay, we're going to go with Mandy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to advise council that Mr. Kelly was sent the appraisal for the Ladiesburg Road parcel that the town owns and he stated that he will accept the price of $3,600. That was the appraisal price. So the next step, which I kind of jumped the gun a little bit, I was hoping we could get this in for a public hearing in October, but I need to get a meets and bounds description. So I would like to ask council if they would allow me to go ahead and reach out to BPR, who was the one who did the initial survey of that, to reach out to them, for them to do the meets and bounds description for this property, and then we can move forward with doing the ordinance at the next town council meeting and then hopefully get this to come to an end come December.
Do we need a motion for that or just to tell her?
I don't think you need, I don't think I need a motion.
Okay.
I just wanted to get approval from the town council to allow me to do that.
Okay.
The next thing that has not come to fruition at this point, but I- The next thing that has not come to fruition at this point, but I did have Don put this on, on my agenda, was the there's a stormwater management, maintenance easement that is behind flood zone. It is not owned by flood zone, it is owned by the county. This came to me about a couple of weeks ago, I knew nothing about it prior to speaking to Tony Russo about this. And I'm still gathering some more information. I reached out to Ned, because I guess they had reached out to him initially about this easement. But I haven't received anything from the county on this yet.
So what, excuse me, but what does that have to do with us?
So?
To be spending your time, is my point.
So what happened was, when flood zone, when we went through with selling the land to flood zone, there were some permit issues that had happened there. In order to rectify those, there is this parcel behind flood zone that is essentially a stormwater management portion that, in order to rectify that, is this easement that they need from, that the county needs to have in place with the town.
Okay.
That is as far as I know right now, which is why I was hoping to have some more information on this, but I just don't.
Okay.
I have a feeling that it's going, it, it's gonna come up probably in the next month, but I just don't have any information. I, I do not believe that the county has reached out to the town since last September.
Right.
So it, it's, it's been over a year, and now I'm receiving information from Tony Russo asking what do they need to do, but it's not between flood zone and the town, it's between the county and the town.
Okay.
So I, I think that the county, from my understanding, needs to reach out to the town and let us know what needs to be done. And if we wanna accept that, then I mean, we're gonna have to look at negotiating.
Okay.
On that side, but I, you know, I didn't have enough information to give you everything, but I wanted you to know that that's going to be coming up probably in the near future. And when I have more information, I will forward it to the town.
County government's slow.
So that is all I have.
Okay, thank you, all right. We'll go down to our committee report, start with Tony.
In the last month, the issue that was brought up down on Penrose with the parking lines has been rectified. Turns out the citizen was actually correct that the parking lines were mismeasured. So they have been remeasured, repainted, and seems like everybody's happy down there. I attended the quarterly M M L dinner work session and the M S four winter weather operations training at the emergency, emergency response place down in?
West Monroe.
Yep, to go over the stormwater. And I also had a meeting here local with Herb and Don about the salt management plan for the winter.
Okay. All right, Ellen?
I don't really have anything at this point, I'm working on some things, but they're not at a point to talk about yet.
Okay, all right, Brett?
We're still waiting on M D E to approve the preliminary engineering report on, or for the wastewater treatment plant, the new plant. And the ball's still in their court on the P five's project for, for the drinking water. And it seems like we're only just waiting on M D E.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They work very, very slow, too.
Very slow.
Yep. All right, Laura?
All right, on September sixteenth, I attended the Carroll County Downtowns meeting. Carroll County Downtowns is creating a story map showcasing all eight municipalities in Carroll County in honor of America's two-hundred-fiftieth birthday. Each municipality will feature up to ten historic sites, highlighting the county's rich heritage. And during our September work session, we identified the sites we wanna include for the story map. And an effort will be that will attract tourists and visitors to Union Bridge. So since that meeting and since our work session, I have been exploring and reading about the town's history, so I can get to work on this project. And that's, that it.
Luke?
Just had two street laces reported, and that's all I've had this month.
That's good. All right, now we'll get down to public comments and concerns. Anybody, please come to the mic, state your name and?
Sharon Thompson. I just wanna read something, because I didn't want to get off track, so I put this in writing, and just if you bear with me, I'm just gonna read it real quickly and then, so everybody's aware. The Lions Club has been working hard to improve Little Pipe Creek Park at no cost to the town. These efforts have created a safer, cleaner, and more welcoming space for the residents. The county's environmental officer was asked for his professional opinion on these improvements, and he said they were beneficial. That means experts outside our town recognize the value. The work has been public, the Lions posted numerous calls for volunteers, openly sharing what they were doing. If the council had been, had had concerns, they could have raised them at that time. Instead, nothing was said until after the improvements were complete. Now the council wants to reprimand them. This isn't the first time community groups have faced resistance. Other organizations like Dream Big also struggled to get support despite bringing their own resources and energy to help the town. What message does this send to volunteers and civic organizations when their civic free labor and improvements are not met with gratitude? And, but with obstacles? Suppressing community initiative discourages people from helping and hurts Union Bridge in the long run. We ask for transparency and fairness. If the council has specific objections, they should be clear and consistent upfront. Not after work has already been done. For accountability, we suggest the recording of tonight's meeting be sent to the state, so it's clear that the resistance isn't about the process. It looks like intentional suppression of groups who are trying to help. Union Bridge deserves leadership that welcomes improvement, not leadership that blocks it. The people here want progress, and we ask the council to support, not stand in the way of those who are willing to roll up their sleeves and make it happen.
Only thing I got to say, that I disagree with you pulling this kinda crap on Facebook before the council knows anything about it. Anybody can put anything on? I don't look at Facebook and that stuff, because most people that go on Facebook, most people, it's freedom of speech. Ninety percent of the time, they do not get the facts correct. And you can put your bullcrap on there all you want, but you bring it to the council meetings, you've been on the council, you've been on the council before.
Because every meeting, three to two, I couldn't get anything through.
Okay, can you please state what they were, because nobody knows what you're talking about, Sharon, because it didn't happen.
Bullcrap.
Okay.
One time it happened, one time it happened.
You can sit down, we're not gonna sit here, and I'm not gonna be like, we're not gonna run this meeting like they run them in Washington, and you can sit down. Anybody else has? Well, I'll say, we're not gonna run them like they run them in Washington, and then you're gonna sit here and argue all night, I'm not gonna run a meeting like that. I do not bully people, but I'm not gonna have you bullying me either.
Can I just say that Facebook posts are not a good way to reach the council?
That's right.
But coming to a council meeting, reaching out to the council person who's in charge to maybe vent your concerns.
Call the town.
What was that?
Call the town.
Call the town. Some of us are not on Union Bridge happenings, and we're not aware of what was happening, so you can't say that we weren't being transparent, because we didn't know that it was happening in Union Bridge happenings. But, you know, I just feel like, you know, for accountability, there's no resistance, we're trying to work with people, but there's bureaucracy in here. The, the council is the legislation, legislative branch of the town, Perry's the executive of the town. So there's bureaucracy, there are clearly defined rules and regulations that we have to follow, which haven't been followed, we're going to follow them.
And, and just as an attorney side point of this, of, of what you guys are doing, I, I, I want the town to understand that not necessarily this is not done to stop you from doing things, there is a liability aspect to a lot of this, that I don't know if a lot of people understand. So that, that, you know, the town is trying to protect themselves, protect you.
Taxpayers.
Yeah, exactly, so that is where a lot of this is coming from, is liability issues that, you know, in a small town, I think a lot of people think we're just gonna help everybody. Unfortunately, there's sometimes that one individual that comes forward, and a town can get sued for millions of dollars. So that's where, I don't think the intention is to suppress anybody in this town, it is to protect the liability and the well-being of the town and the people who live here. That's just a side point from my point of view.
I appreciate everything the council has had to say tonight. The, the only issue, the only thing that I can really find fault with the, the council about is this process has been going on, and it's not been, we had, we didn't do this in a back, and people knew about this. How many of the council members have been down there to actually walk the park and see what we had done? What we got back from the council, unfortunately, now, we didn't put our best foot forward, honestly. We made a mistake, and I apologize for that.
And so did I, I'll take credit for taking, making a mistake also, because I didn't bring everything back.
And everybody's kind of?
Can, can I stop you right there, and, and, and just ask this? What negative response have you received from anybody that's sitting here?
Well, the negative response that, that we got was that there was consternation, and the, the purpose, the reason that we're here tonight is not because we thought everything was going fine, it came to our attention, that within the council, there was some problems with what we were doing. We thought we would head that issue off. We certainly, in, in, in the beginning, I, I swear on my life, we had no intentions of, of causing a, a disagreement. We just really thought what we were doing, and I still do. I think what we're doing is improving the environmental health of the area.
And?
And, and, and beautifying, and, and, and it's a natural resource that we have within our community, and it's free to the public.
Dale, I think the problem is, is just like I just stated a couple of minutes ago, some people can put stuff on Facebook they ain't got the do-dads to come down here and talk to us in person about, and that's where it's at. I don't have a problem, like I said, I don't have a problem with what you done, I think what you done down there looks great. And, and, and I gave, I gave permission for it, I gave permission for Dream Big to have their dirt, or their duck derby down there, and I didn't bring all that back to the council, so I'm taking blame for that. And I think we just have to go on from there and make sure that we do it correctly from now on.
And I really do appreciate the opportunity to speak, you know, what I don't want this to turn into is people on either side of, of the argument digging their heels in, and then we can't do any of this. We can't shake hands, we can't communicate properly, and it just turns into a pissing contest, and if I run out of piss first, you still lose.
Yeah.
So it's no, it's no good for any of us.
I'm not sure any of this was ever intended to be adversarial to begin with.
I hope not.
I, I can tell you when?
And it wasn't, it's, it's, it's a couple people in this town is gonna make everything controversial.
Unfortunately, I don't see anything, the, the only concern, like I said, I, I don't want to have to run to the council every time I wanna start a lawnmower up. I don't wanna have to run to the council every time I pick up a leaf or a twig or redo something.
We're gonna move on, and, and we're gonna get this worked out. Yes.
We need to come to the council.
Right.
So I really would appreciate that you guys actually vote, and let us see who's for it, who's against it, and, and let's take it from there. And, and, and Lions Club is certainly willing to work with the town, if the town's willing to work with us.
And I think what we've talked about tonight can be, can be rectified and taken care of, you know? I know we have a lot of people in here tonight that have comments about the park, and, you know, I think we'll hear some of those comments that, whether negative or good or whatever, we're gonna hear some of the other comments that people hear about the park. 'Cause I see people down there every day, I see Mrs. Doxson back there, she's out there every day on the park.
I'm telling you, it's a great place to meet.
I just wanna move on, Dale, so I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I know you're a talker, you can talk all day, but I'm gonna move on.
You know I will.
I know, but I'm not gonna let you.
Debbie Doxson, I wish I was there every day, I should be there every day, I'm not, but I see you and Archie, so you're able to say that I really am not there every day. I thought I was just coming to tell you how wonderful everything, I didn't know this was a big political brouhaha.
But it is not.
We don't wanna make it that way.
And I'm not entering that, I'm not entering that, I'm here to tell you, well, first I wanna ask, after listening to a lot of people, who exactly is responsible for the maintenance of the park?
The town.
The town.
The town. So you all do all the mowing?
We have been, and except for the last month or so, that they took this one section on.
Okay, you mean where the?
The park benches.
Right, yes.
Which is lovely. I stopped, I looked, I saw Jake Altvater's name on there, he sold us our house almost forty years ago. So he won't, I know somebody thought we wouldn't be lasting so long, but we did.
No, I know when people move to Union Bridge, they stay forever, 'cause they love the area.
You know, and you're, we just were never born with the dirt, we can't help it. But the maintenance is wonderful. The grass, I love the grass, nice and clipped, I understand there's a, there's an area where?
Wetlands that we can't mow, yeah.
Well, I was gonna say, it's one area used to go?
Butterflies.
Monarch butterflies, which I have to say, I came over and took a few leaves to take home to the caterpillars that we had. The idea of the trees, the tree trunks becoming more visible was outstanding. I walk a couple of laps at least, and when I would get to one point, I didn't feel as safe, because I couldn't see what was ahead. But now with all the trees trimmed, it's, it's much, it feels much better, feels much better. So, safety from that respect. It is a beautiful park, sometimes I walk and I'm by myself. I'm probably one of the few people who walk who don't have a dog with them. But it is wonderful for mind, body, and soul, it is a beautiful park. I've made lots of friends, I don't know what their names are, I don't care what their names are. But when you do it regularly, you, you become familiar with different people. And I know they're coming from everywhere. And for the record, I don't live in?
The corporate area, yes, right.
The corporate area, I live on Bark Hill. But I have many friends who come from New Windsor. I met a guy, and he comes from Emmitsburg to walk. The other day, I was just there, there was a van of people who take care of dogs. And, I mean, it, it is a wonderful, wonderful place. The Lions Club bench, very touching, very touching. Oh, and I'd like to thank whoever put up that spot of pot, because I actually mentioned the need. I was told I could go behind a tree, but that doesn't work so well in the wintertime when there are leaves on the tree. Oh, it's you! I just noticed you, I'm standing in front. So thank you for the spot of pot, what else do I have here? And, and I think that probably is about all, but I, I have to say, after listening to everyone, it's a big park. And it takes a lot of people to maintain that park. And I would think that the town, I understand about the liability, I would think the park would want others to partner with them to take care of it, so it can remain as beautiful as it is.
And I think that's what they want, because we know, we, we all know in today's world, people have an accident, and they try to sue everybody that's involved. They don't see what's, you know, the Lions Club's there and somebody gets hurt, they don't just go with the Lions Club, they're gonna try to sue everybody's, their, every council person's name, everybody that's ever had anything to do with it, their names are involved, you know?
Would you say that that's the primary reason for you wanting to have permission?
Yes, just for protection of you and us, the liability.
The primary reason for us wanting to give permission is that the town of Union Bridge owns it. And it's our responsibility, that's all we've asked, is that?
We get a plan.
Things don't show up, and it's like, wow, how did that get here? And people don't, because now it's the Lions Club, great intentions, and, and I thank you for what you've done. But what's the next group that may wanna come in there? And not everybody has the same vision that you have or we have. So that's why we own it, we're responsible for it, and we just ask that courtesy. Ellen's in charge of parks, call her, start with her, you can call any of us, call Dawn, and we'll work these things out. There's no problem, there's no great political thing, there's no politics in Union Bridge, we don't, we don't even know who we are. We're here, we're here for the town. Well, it depends on your definition. Yes, but?
We've been here before.
We're just trying to do the best thing and the right thing, the correct thing, the legal thing, that's all we're trying to do. That's all this is about, is that I was unaware that this was going on. Now, maybe that's my fault, because I don't go down there, I don't know, but I don't. Well, it's a nice place, I have walked there before, but I don't work on the farm, I get plenty of that there. I get plenty of that there. But, but that's all. That's all we were asking, is that there's some communication and that we know what's going on. I don't think that's too much to ask.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to let you know.
Well, thank you. I can say I take.
And I know we, I know my husband and I have been here and adversarial.
I don't know about that.
But we.
But you had an interest.
Support something that really is beneficial to all.
Well, we appreciate that.
And you're on a grand job. Keep it up, and have lots of helpers help.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
It's good seeing you guys.
Thanks.
It's been a while.
We're still kicking.
I folks, I'm Kent Doxson, the lesser half of the two. No, I come in here more, just as a fisherman. You know, I greatly appreciate what the state is doing, what you all have allowed to take place in that, in that stream and all. I've fished quite a few areas that are the put and take, which is what that is, a put and take stream, around the state here and everything. And access wise, you probably got the best access for the fishermen, because you go some of these places, and you kill yourself trying to get out to the streams and stuff. You're ready to tell you to do it, but there's nothing there to try to get you. You always have to have a machete, a bushwhack your way into the place. So this is great for that type of thing. In fact, they're coming in there and putting the fish in all along. It does not appear that they're dumping them in one spot.
No, different spots, yeah.
And take them and run them up and down the creek there and everything. So I think that's a great thing. My one concern would be letting it get overdeveloped from the standpoint of too many picnic tables, too many things like that. Because what ends up happening is, and I apologize for fishermen, but some of them are not, you know.
Don't take care of things.
Responsible. You know, and they're gonna leave their trash and leave their things, and the next thing you know, it gets a little junked up, a little ratty looking around there and all. And, you know, you gotta watch that taking place in those areas there. And as far as you, as far as the purpose of that stream, the purpose of that stream is to, like you were saying there, as far as retaining water around the areas there and all, and let it drain in slowly. You don't want it, any rapid drainage. We have, on our property, we've got basically a headwaters of one of the little feeder streams that come down through and in the Little Pipe Creek. And I try to keep all, go by both sides of my creek, we've got it all groomed up. I let it all grow up whenever, because I'm trying to keep it banked straight and.
Has to stay stable, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, you don't want to get too much development along this thing here, because it ends up causing problems in the end. So, you know, caution is urged.
Yes.
With what you do on that place.
And we know with the trout stream, you have to keep certain areas of it to a trout or cold water fish. So you have to let those areas grow along the banks so that you have cover for the trout.
You keep the stream, you keep it stream, you know, the coolness, really cool.
That's right.
You know, I don't know how long they last, you know, I'd be curious how long.
They don't make it. They, they don't. What you don't get.
I know they get pulled. I know they get pulled.
But they die.
They die.
Have you seen them floating dead?
No, but I do know last winter, last fall, it was like the first of December, because a guy stopped by the garage, and he's still catching trout out of there. And I was surprised, we're still there.
Yeah, I'm impressed.
I am too.
I'm impressed.
But there was still some there. Gentleman's from Westminster, comes up here almost every week, at least one day a week, and fishes. And last December, he was still catching trout. And I was, I was very surprised.
Yeah.
Because of the warm weather we had, but some of them do make it.
Good.
All right, well, thank you all very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Okay, anyone else? Keep going here. Any other public comments and concerns? We're gonna keep going. Third and final call for public comments and concerns. We have no further comments and concerns. Our next work session will be October the sixth, right? Next council meeting is October the twenty-seventh. So. And a work session has to be public for two weeks, has to be notified. So we're almost gonna be running out of time for the next work session to make out an open meeting for the public, so.
Well, it is open.
It's open.
To get on the agenda.
We're going to discuss a certain thing.
Issue, it has to be public, yes. Okay. All right, if there's no further business here to see, I'd look for a motion for adjournment.
Okay, I'll second it.
A motion and a second to adjourn. Any comments? Hearing none, all those favorize.
Aye.
And those motions carried, and we are dismissed for this evening. So thank you very much for your comments. Love seeing you here.